Good evening, colleagues and audience members. My name is Ed Reichsinger. I am the chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee for the City Council. We are here this evening to conduct our second hearing on map amendments to City Council Bill 12-0152, Transform Baltimore Zoning. This evening, we would like to hear from as many of our constituents as possible. We would like to thank the administrative team and the entire Digital Harbor School family for hosting this evening. Every hearing is open to public testimony, and citizens may come and provide testimony at each public hearing. The following guidelines, however, will be enforced today and throughout the process. Persons wishing to offer all testimony must sign in and state their name, their address, or community in which they reside, and who, if anyone, they represent for the record. It is helpful to the committee if each person testifying or requesting a zoning change for a specific property, complete the information form being handed out by staff. And I'll stop there. This is the information form you get at that table to my far left. Electronic files are being made available on the City Council website. Bill documents can be downloaded from Bill 12-0152's file page by inputting the following link in your web browser, which is https://baltimore-ledgestar.com. A copy of the maps has also been placed in the bill folder located in the Executive Secretary's office at City Hall. Her name is Natanaa Austin. I encourage everyone to visit the council's website to stay updated about Bill 12-0152. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively reviewing all map amendments presented. City agencies and the public will be asked to participate by raising requests or comments. If you would like to contact the committee, please mail correspondence to the Office of Council Services. Attention to Jennifer Coach, who is at my right, at 100 North Holiday Street, Baltimore, Maryland, 21202, or you can email Jennifer at jennifer.coach@baltimorecity.gov. At this time, I'd like to introduce some of my colleagues. To my left, far left, is Councilman Nick Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To Councilman Mosby, right, is Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To my immediate left is Councilman Jim Kraft, who is the vice chair of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're also joined by... Anyone here from the mayor's office? The president's office?
Paul Clement.
Paul Clement, he is representing President Bernard Jack Young. The one and only grand rule that I have is please turn off your cell phones, Androids, smartphones, or put it on mute to give courtesy and respect to those who want to testify tonight. We will start with the Planning Department, which will provide us with the report, which includes a PowerPoint presentation. Laurie?
Okay.
And before you go in, I just want to say to the committee, if you have any questions, you know, each committee member can ask two questions.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you, members of the committee. I'm going to go through a brief presentation to explain the mapping principles used to develop these maps. One sort of housekeeping piece is there are maps organized by Councilmatic District of the entire city, available to review there. And the base colors on the map, and there's a key, they tell you what the land is recommended to be zoned. And then on top of them, if the amendment or the type is in red, that is an amendment that was heard and reviewed favorably at Planning Commission. And if it's in blue, that means it's an amendment that's been received by this committee since that time. The Planning Commission finished in September of 2013. So if this committee received any amendments between then and September 25th is the date on the maps. Councilman Henry's back there, I think. Oh. They are in blue. Amendments received after September 25th are not on those maps. They will be put onto a final round for review. These maps, again, the September 25th maps are available, I checked today, on the council website under this bill number 12-0152. They're PDFs, and you can review them for your Councilmatic District. In addition, unfortunately, the Internet is being very erratic in this building, and our planner, Jamie Williams, back there, is having trouble looking it up. But she can give you the website if you want to check individual addresses and can't, you know, read on the maps. And if you go online, you can also zoom in on the maps. Okay. So briefly, of course, and we've gone through this at numerous hearings, but zoning is the rules and regulations placed on land, and it outlines how the land can be used and what type of structures can be built. Baltimore's first zoning code was 1923, and we are currently proposing to repeal and replace the 1971 code. Its purpose is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. The authority for zoning is given to us by the state of Maryland under its land use A couple sort of explanatory points on zoning. Again, it determines what can be built on the property. It is the first step, and it speaks to list of uses and what could be built in the future in terms of height or replacement buildings, that sort of thing. Important points are zoning does not distinguish between good businesses and bad businesses. A store is a store. And zoning does not determine human behavior in terms of, you know, whether one store, somebody's loitering, and another store, they're not. And as I mentioned, our last zoning code dates to 1971, so it's well over 40 years since it's been updated or reviewed. And a lot has changed, especially in the nature of business and industry. So our comprehensive plan was adopted in 2006, the Live, Earn, Play, Learn. And one of the major recommendations was to do a new zoning code. And the purpose was to make sure that that code protects and guides city development investment, enhances and protects neighborhood character, strengthens our retail districts, and promotes job growth. Our goal was to make the code predictable, enforceable, and understandable for the users. Some of the principles, I'm not going to read through this, again, this is all online, in terms of drafting the code, was related to organization, to modernize the uses, incorporate design agenda, implement the comprehensive plan, promote sustainable development, and make it easy to understand. So the mapping. There are four major principles that guided us in the mapping recommendations. These, you know, were based on four major principles. The first one, and the most straightforward, is to maintain current zoning in their present location where controls are appropriate for the current development pattern, and no change is desired. And let me just go to this. So just as an example, maintaining the current zoning in the district. If it is currently, you know, residential, there's no plan to change it. And the bulk and yard regulations are the same to maintain that. This is not about massive changes. And typical, this map is included because the olive green is, this is southeast Baltimore, and it's really maintaining that existing zoning, which is primarily residential, and it reflects the current activity. The little peach color there, which is the commercial, is the Eastern Avenue in Highland Town, and the bright green being Patterson Park. The second mapping principle is to remap areas to reduce nonconformities. And in our work, we realized that, you know, with the ability to go through and zoom in and look at the current categories, we realized that numerous properties throughout the city are nonconforming. Likely, there were some errors made in 1971, because most of these are older areas. And for example, the map on the left is R4, and that's a semi-detached zone. And R3 only permits detached houses. So when we identified an area that's currently zoned R3 but is filled with semi-detached houses, we made the recommendation to move that to R4. Or if the lot area was slightly less, for example, R1 requires 7,300 square feet of lot area or greater, we identified a few small areas of the city that had smaller lots, didn't want those homes to remain nonconforming, and recommended they be R3. So that's the second principle. The third one is to remap applicable areas to implement development policies. And the best example of that is we identified, and this actually goes back to the comprehensive plan, we identified throughout the city where we have older industrial buildings that are not in industrial areas particularly, but are nestled often on the edges and surrounded by residential, and are multi-level buildings, and not really applicable or successful at being used for industrial purposes anymore, and ideal for a more mixed use. We created a new zoning category recommended in the text, industrial mixed use, and that is reflected in the map there on blue. The picture above just gives you an example of that building, a particular building with that industrial mixed use. So that's an example of trying to find and develop zoning categories that really address different policies. And in this case, it was a goal to reuse these mostly abandoned industrial buildings. And the fourth principle was to apply policy-specific districts when remapping to resolve specific conditions or achieve specific purposes. So examples there are transit-oriented development, and that is that sort of aqua color. We use that as a map recommendation among our metro and light rail stations. We maybe too soon recommended mapping it along the red line stations as well. And so those will be a series of amendments I think this committee will be reviewing. But that transit-oriented development is to make sure that we have the right zoning tool to utilize the property in that half-mile circle near the transit stations while still maintaining the neighborhood character. I just wanted to point out on this map, I believe this is Union Avenue in the Medfield-Woodbury area, and there's a circle around the station. And you'll notice, not everything in that circle is the TOD zone. Really, the underutilized property is. So the row houses that exist and those sort of things have their regular zoning. So the TOD is sort of targeted and carved, unlike what you see in the suburban jurisdictions when they do the TOD out in an isolated area. Other examples are the campus zones and hospital zones. Campus zones, hospital and university, those are new, and the policy there is that these are major, major institutions. We believe they need their own base zoning category. Most of them are zoned residentially now, and that doesn't really suit their needs, because it's very limited to residential. And these are institutions, and they're here to stay. Waterfront overlays are based on the renewal plans, and row house mixed use and detached house mixed use are overlays on our residential zones typically that exist on a busier corridor and have had commercial uses in them. Another, and actually, I'm not sure, this probably falls within the, between the sort of policy-specific and the area zones, but one of the planning tools was protect the nonconformities. We realized that many of the larger lot zones, as I mentioned, R1, which was our larger district, is limited to 7,300 square feet. We created five zones with sizes larger than that mapped on areas that already had those large lots. So right now, they're mostly 7,300 square feet, and now, under this new proposal, they're more accurate to their lot size, whether it's quarter acre, half acre, one acre, or we even have a two acre. These are just examples of the campus zone, and the photographs there are really intended to show how the edges of these campuses in the upper right there, for example, often are very close to residential or commercial areas, whereas the interiors of them, no one ever sees. And so those campus zones are designed to be a little bit more sensitive around the edges and more flexible in the interior. Sinai Hospital, very similar. There's row houses right across on one side, whereas other sides are major traffic corridors. These are examples of places where the row house mixed use is recommended. You can see they're very commercial on the ground floor, but row house structures above. So we did not want to recommend that these be just flat-out commercial zones. That would incentivize tearing them down and just doing sort of strip centers. So this overlay kind of tweaks that and gets in the in-between there. Downtown have their own commercial districts, very flexible with sub-districts that meet the specific sub-area type tweaks. This is just for convenience, a screenshot from our webpage, which shows you where to go to type in under Downloadables, the addresses, and then the maps are there. And that is...
Before we get started, I want to acknowledge receipt of correspondence from Shelley Senert, if I pronounced that right?
Senator.
Senator, okay. I'm sorry about that. The handouts are on the committee's desk. This is the signing seat at the table. Anyone who hasn't signed, wishes to sign in, please go ahead and sign in at the signing seat at the table. We will start... By the way, we are joined by my colleague. To the far left is Councilman Bill Henry. Far left. We will start with Dr. Shelley.
Senator.
Senator?
Okay. Do you have any questions? Is this working? Yes.
If you can, Shelley, if you could just tell us, you know, where you live, what Councilmatic District?
Certainly.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is, I'm Dr. Shelley Senert, and I'm president of the North Roland Park Association. We are the part of your community, a part of Baltimore City, that is the very furthest north, right in the center of the city. We are bounded by Northern Parkway, Roland Avenue, Falls Road, a small amount of Lake Avenue, and the old Maryland and Pennsylvania Railroad bed on our east side. So we have a number of different issues. I'll go rapidly through them. If you haven't received all of them, I'll work with Jennifer to make sure that you have correspondence on every one of them. Tonight, I'm also representing the Orchards Association, which is a community directly to the east of ours. The president could not attend and has asked me to bring up a property of theirs as well, which I have communicated about in writing. First, I'd like to talk briefly about educational campuses. We have met a number of times with the schools that adjoin our community. There are three private schools that adjoin our community. And for the past two years, we've been interacting extensively with other community associations and with the schools to see if we could find a resolution to any of our concerns that our community members had. And at this time, we would like to just say that we are opposed to the amendment, and what we would like to do is to maintain the original plan as it was written, and therefore, we are opposed to rezoning into educational campuses, and we would like to leave it as written. I testified about this before on a previous hearing, one held at Poly. Chris McSherry has also testified about this, and I've written about this a number of times. We have several homes in our community that have been purchased by these schools and are being used ostensibly for educational purposes. I have listed them. I'm going to list them briefly here now for the record. So we are opposed of taking these R1D properties, they're all R1D on the map, they're R1 now, and moving them to EC1. We want them to stay R1D. This would be 608 West Northern Parkway, and it's an adjacent house purchased today, which is 621 Benston Place. These were both bought by the Bryn Mawr School for Girls. We're also concerned about 5501 Roland Avenue, which is owned by Gilman School, and 5603 Roland Avenue, which is owned by the School Sisters of Notre Dame. I want to make it plain that we love schools and education. We also are not opposed to education uses of private property, but we would like to see that property, its use, having been part of a master plan and a dialogue with the community. And we are very happy to work with the schools to develop uses that are mutually beneficial, both to our homeowners and to the school and their purpose. Most of our conversations have been to resolve any difficulties, but we still want to leave them zoned R. In the Orchards, 5702 Stony Run Drive is about to be sold. It is where their headmistress lives, and yet it is on the campus as an EC1. We would like, on the plan, as an EC1, and we would like that to be planned back as an R1D. If you have any questions about any of these, please don't hesitate to ask me. That concludes my comments on educational campuses.
Okay. Councilman Henry, you have a question?
It does reach. Excellent. Good evening.
Hi.
I just wanted to clarify at the beginning of your request. It's clear that you don't want the schools to actually be zoned EC1.
Mm-hmm.
I get that. Are you also asking that the concept of EC1 be removed, or you're just worried about as a map issue?
What we want is for the schools to have to submit a master plan to the City Council. And we want the City Council to approve that master plan. We want them to have to undergo a dialogue with the community members and with their adjacent homeowners to come up with a plan for the use of the campus, especially its boundaries, that fits the character of the surrounding community. Our concern is not a school building, or a little school, or a kindergarten. Our concern is a parking lot, a stadium, a power plant. Those are the concerns we have. And we found, to our dismay, that most of these schools are unwilling to develop a master plan that they will disclose to us, and they're not willing to commit to a design for the future. So we would like a dialogue. We'd like to work with them, so we can all find... We're not opposed to using these properties for school buildings at all.
Okay. Then just to clarify, what you're asking for, that relates to amendments to the text of EC1?
Yes.
That Councilwoman Middleton and Councilwoman Clark are supporting.
Yes, and it's exactly in concurrence with what has been testified.
And so if those were to move forward, you would not need these to not be zoned EC1?
No, because they're in individual houses, they're individual residences.
The individual properties you still want them to be?
Yes, sir.
Got you.
Those would have to still change.
Okay. Thank you very much.
But we're certainly very happy to work with all schools.
Okay. Councilwoman Middleton?
And just not really asking a question, but to make a statement. The area that you're talking about is represented by the councilperson of the 5th district, and I...
Yes, ma'am.
And that Northern Parkway, just for clarification, too, Northern Parkway is basically the boundary line for the 6th district. And I have the schools, such as you mentioned, and the Roland Park Civic League, testify as well, Gilman, Friend School, and I agree with everything that you have stated there. You know, these schools have basically run out of space to grow land-wise, and they're starting to affect the neighborhoods that have been thriving and have been there for a while. As a representative of the area and working closely with all of the communities, I have constantly tried to build communication and partnerships so that these schools can have representatives to come to their meetings and build some type of rapport. And quite honestly, it's not happening like it should. And it's sad that it's things like this that have to happen and be put into place to, you know, kind of continue to encourage that, which I have no problem with as the representative. So thank you for, I guess, adding that in to what we're about to make changes with.
You've been great, by the way, helping all of the meetings, and so has Mary Pat Clark. We want to thank you both for really... We've worked hard to try to make a better relationship with all the private schools and the communities.
Yes, you have.
I think things will go forward in a positive way if we can.
Yes, you have.
But still, we have to protect our homeowners. Is that all right if I go on to the next item?
Yes.
All right. The next item, and this is my last item for today, is that there is a property, a 12-acre site, that's just behind the Belvedere Towers apartment buildings. It's identified as Block 820E, Lot 021, and quote, "the 12-acre site just east of Belvedere Towers." This is a forest. It is not a vacant land. It is not ugly. It's a woods. It's a very pretty woods. And we have been undergoing a process of conversation with Congress, with Ms. Spector about this. And I'm not certain that she agrees with us, but we're going to then turn it over to the rest of the City Council and see what you think. So we're asking all of the City Council members on this committee to please consider our request. In March 2013, this property... Let me go back just very quickly. What we're asking for here is that this property be left as it was originally proposed to be rezoned, which is R1A, which is two-acre lots. We are certainly cognizant of the fact that development will occur. We are not opposed to development of residential development, but at this time, we want to make sure we have the maximum flexibility to work with any potential developers. This particular plot of land, during the 2011 Planning Commission examination of this particular bit of use of this property, they made a determination that the entire parcel should be rezoned as R1A, consistent with all the rest of the properties in the adjacent area. All of them are R1A, and the very least, R1D down on Falls Road, which is also in our community. These two areas consist of exclusively residential properties, except for a gas station on the corner and the Belvedere Towers apartments. The 12-acre parcel is currently owned by Belvedere Towers Associates Limited License Corporation, Delaware Corporation, owned by the Deener and Resnick families. It's been owned by them for over 50 years. They also used to own the apartment building, the Belvedere Towers apartment building, but in May 27, they sold it for $23 million. And so we are a bit concerned now, because they're trying to sell the 12-acre parcel behind it. In March 2013, counsel for the Deener-Resnick family successfully persuaded the Planning Commission to rescind the R1 zoning planned in the Transform Baltimore. They argued in writing to the Planning Commission that in 1963, Belvedere Associates had entered into recorded agreements with my community association, the North Roland Park Association, and the neighbors. And they said, quote, "As partial consideration for these agreements, the owners promised that the balance of the 12.7-acre tract would be left in a natural state and not developed for a period of 50 years. We are requesting to retain the current R6 zoning on a portion of this site." This representation to the Planning Commission was totally inaccurate, because the two recorded agreements specifically enabled the Deener-Resnick family to build a building on that 12-acre parcel of not more than 100 units. To take this out of the legalese, if you all know the Belvedere Towers apartments, they've had all the time they wanted, and they could do it today, to put another exactly similar building right there without any permission from... building right there without any permission from the community. It's in the covenants, it's in the deeds, there's no problem at all, there never has been. We brought, the documents are also publicly available on the web, on the city, they've all been recorded with the city. Based on the incorrect representations to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission felt that because the Deener-Resnick family had been prohibited from building anything for 50 years on the 12-acre parcel, R1A zoning would not be appropriate. It's interesting to note that we have repeatedly written to Ms. Spector about this, and she continues to tell us that she doesn't think that's important. We do think it's important that the Planning Commission had accurate information. Let me mention that we were not notified of this change. They notified the wrong community. They notified the Poplar Hill Improvement Association. We are not affiliated with them in any way. It's like, it's like telling the people who live in Manhattan about something that's happening in Brooklyn. It's just not relevant. And we were therefore never aware of it, the maps hadn't been updated, and we didn't realize this amendment had been proposed, or that it had been approved. The adjacent homeowners also had no voice, not a single one knew, none of us knew. At a public meeting that we called, which Ms. Spector attended, and which a developer attended, which was the reason that we were having the meeting, Ms. Spector announced to us that it had been approved as an amendment to go R6. And you should have heard the commotion, because no one was aware. I would tell you that we are adamantly opposed to the R6 zoning, and we would like to see this returned to R1A. So, the North Roland Park Association urges the Planning Commission to reinstate the R1A zoning that it originally proposed before it received the false blandishments from the owners of the 12-acre parcel to the east of Belvedere Towers. If you don't like that argument, I'd like to give you another one. The traffic is appalling. I'd like you just to note that this is the number-one intersection in Baltimore for volume. There is no more heavily trafficked intersection than Falls Road and Northern Parkway, well documented by the city's traffic department. It simply will not sustain another 100, 200, 300 cars exiting onto Northern Parkway at that site. We are concerned about that. We're concerned because it's gridlocked now in North Baltimore. So, it's also a beautiful environmental area with lots of old stand trees, and we're trying to preserve them, preserve the character and nature, and let the environmental, the good things that, that trees bring to our community, clean air, there's two streams on the property, deer run through it, and it's quite beautiful. So, we'd like to see that that property is more carefully cared for as it is developed in the future. We're certainly not trying to deprive the property owner of their rights to develop it, they're planning to sell it, and we're, we're planning to work with whatever developer purchases it, so we're not closing the door on development. Thank you very much, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Henry?
Trying to do this without knocking things over. Thank you. I'm looking at the proposed zoning maps that we have here in front of us. It would be Map 2A. Now, admittedly, this is dated October 2012, so I suppose perhaps there has been a, maybe there was a change since then, because-
It's on that map on the table.
Okay, all right, because I'm, the, the lot you're describing is clearly, is clearly listed as R1A.
Yes, and on the new maps-
It's against the amendment, not the original.
An amendment that's been proposed.
No, amendment that's been approved.
Proposed and approved, supported by the Planning Commission.
Ah, okay, it's been, gotcha, okay, so-
This 12-acre, this 12-acre piece of land has the top part being R1A, and the bottom part, next to Belvedere Towers apartments, being, being R6. And it's on the new map, it's now finally been revised. You have what we had-
Right, okay.
And it's not correct. What we're opposed to is the bottom part, the R6, the six acres going R6.
Okay, so just to, just to be clear, the Planning Commission approved an amendment that it is, let me, let me start over. The map that is actually before the council, is the map that is before the council, does that reflect it as R1A, or, okay, so you're opposed to the Planning Commission's proposed amendment to the map?
Correct.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yes, and so, we were told that it's too late, we don't believe it's too late. And so, we're asking that, having consulted with all the surrounding communities as well, Poplar Hill, North Roland Park, Roland Park, everyone agrees, we would like to see this stay R1A.
Yeah. The buck stops with us, and so, Ms. Senate, we want to thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Douglas Armstrong?
As I was before you yesterday in the Land Use and Transportation Committee concerning rezonings, and I was pointing out to you that they were illegal, two things are specifically have sprung to mind. The first is that you are asking people to apply rezoning to maps when you have still yet to finalize categories in the code. The code is not set as to what a C1, C2, R1A, R1D, any of that is not set, it is not official. So, asking people to designate a particular designation, a particular zoning code designation as it is proposed to a map is putting the cart in front of the horse, that's the first thing. The second thing is, you don't have a transportation plan. State-enabling law requires you to have a state, a transportation plan, so this whole business is well carted before the horse. So, as a result, I think you need to fold the tent and start over. Thank you.
Thank you, Joly Noddy. Mr. Jim Dwyer?
Good evening, I'm Jim Dwyer, I'm with the Maryland Port Administration, I run the Planning Department there, and we manage the state-owned cargo terminals in the Port of Baltimore. And the port's been around over 300 years, that's about 90 years longer than the incorporated city of Baltimore. So, that gives us the right to say we are a traditional enterprise for the city. And with the more and more international businesses being global in nature, it behooves us to have a healthy port nearby to keep in that market. And what the port, both the state-owned terminals and the private terminals, what they need to survive is land for their terminals, they need access to deep water, and then access, land access, either highway or rail, to get inland. And we believe that the Transform Baltimore captures all of the benefits of the MIZAD, the Maritime Industrial Zone Overlay District, and it strengthens them and makes them permanent. This is really very important, especially for the private terminals, because it adds a lot of consistency that they need if they're trying to get loans and make capital improvements. Our request is that you pass Transform Baltimore, the maps as written, and that you support industry and industrial zoning in a general way wherever possible, and keep that strong for the Baltimore city. Thank you.
Any questions? Statements now? Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Deborah Tempera, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And we are joined by Councilman Eric Costello, this is his district, he's hosting the event.
Hello, my name's Deborah Tempera, and I live in-
If you could speak closer to the microphone, please.
Is that close enough?
Yeah, thank you.
I live at 960 Fell Street, Unit 514, in the Fells Point area, I guess that's District 1. I don't know, there's a lot of things upsetting in our neighborhood, and I think some of you have gotten wind of that a little bit. And I guess it all started with a bill that was going to be entered, was presented by Councilman Kraft relating to rezoning a particular property, 2030 Alizana Street. I wasn't paying a lot of attention at that point, but then when I did see the plans of the developer of what the new spot zoning, as I call it, would have, if it would have occurred, this building was gigantic. It was not appropriate, in fact, it was supported by Planning Commission, or Planning Laurie's Department or whatever. They recommended that this should not go to R10, because it's now zoned R8. So, that started it. And we got over 200 signatures, I think you might have been aware of this a little bit, if you read the papers, you saw the opposition, and it was all immediate. But what that did, and was kind of stupid, because I have 200 petitions, but not knowing the procedure of Transform Baltimore and what you needed to do, I should have had with me also these amendment sheets, because we could have maybe knocked this thing in the horse. Because now we have to possibly go through having the problem that they're trying to amend this particular site to a C-2. So, my one amendment I placed tonight was that I do not even want the parcel to be a C-1, because like was just currently testified, we don't know what these, some of these codes mean in a way, it's very, very difficult. It took us a lot of work just to get to this stage, and here it's almost over with, with the voting session coming up. We're gridlocked, we have no transportation plan, and I think you know that, and that was one. Another amendment I put in, it's a parcel land, 513-529 South Carolina Street. This parcel, apparently in 2012, had I-MU. Its current zoning is R8. It's an R8 parcel with adjacent neighbors behind them that are R8, and all of a sudden, in 2012, it jumps to IMU. I'm like, in historical district, a boot. It's like, wait a minute, how did this jump to an IMU? Well, in 2030, in 2013 apparently, Planning Commission recommends that it go back to R8. So, I'm supporting Planning Commission's evaluation. And I guess that's basically all I have to say at this point. We still have another session, I believe, another map amendment session coming up.
We have, for you and the audience, we have two more hearings on map amendments, and it's not too late for anyone who wants to submit any text amendments in regards to comprehensive zoning. We still have time.
I do have one thing to say, I wasn't there last night, but Councilman Kraft, you can correct me if you'd like to, but my understanding is that you had mentioned some things, just people saying, where have you guys been, that this has been a long process, many, many years. And with that, I do tend to agree with him. However, things have been changing. Also, when we were rezoned prior to Transform Baltimore, and my understanding, and I was involved in that, we were to get rid of our urban renewal plan, but by becoming a CHAP district, we would be protected. Well, when you saw the project that could have possibly, and may still possibly go up at 2030, and across the street on our waterfront, it is not what we believe we were going to be grandfathered into. My suggestion is we have some type of overlay in our historical district, again, to preserve our height, because right now, we are not protected at all. And CHAP's response is, it is out of our hands. So, our historical district needs this overlay, for density and height.
The, the historic district continues to have the CHAP overlay, and as you know better than most, any of these things have to go before CHAP, if they're in the CHAP district. So, and, and I think the folks that are here from Fells Point know, in terms of construction, the requirements that have to be met to go before CHAP. And I've, I've seen a lot of the flyers and heard other things, but, you know, in terms of these properties being rezoned, whether they're being rezoned from B22 to C1, which is most of the properties, or some that are B3 to C1, you know, these are all existing properties. In order to them to be used as a C1 in most cases, they're going to be, have to, torn down, when people talk about saying, making them-
Right, no, I understand.
-40 feet, or 100 feet, or, I mean, 60 feet or 100 feet, they have to be torn down, they have to get a demolition permit through CHAP before they can do anything. So, that's step one, so that's a serious issue. The second thing is, on the, when we repealed and reenacted the urban renewal ordinance, we repealed and reenacted the urban renewal ordinance with the intention of protecting the waterfront. And that's what we did, and if you look at the W1 overlay, the waterfront overlay for Fells Point, it is virtually the same in terms of the height restrictions and everything else, and the coverage, both in terms of the parcels and in terms of the site corridors. So, if you look at those, and in fact, I think Laurie came to both Fells Point and to the other neighborhood associations and talked about those particular tables and, and maps, I think it's 12-1, 12-3, I can't remember the exact numbers, but anyhow. So, those things are all still there, and they're all still in place. They have new names, but they're not being taken away. So, the protections are still there.
Well, I've seen the protections since we've had this change in lost urban renewal plan, it is not good. Look at the Bezuto site on Wolf Street, the density of it is terrible, the traffic we have is unbearable, the street is falling in-
And that's a separate issue.
Well, but it's still a CHAP place, an historical district, on the waterfront. So, we have some other waterfront. And I was told by the developer of 2030, he said, "Just sit back, you're going to have a lot of changes coming in, and you just better get used to it." So, another example of CHAP protecting us, which doesn't look good, look at the buildings behind the Broadway corridor and the 600 block of Broadway. I mean, they're kind of a little bit of noxious. I mean, we are people who are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on one stinking little row home to bring it back the way it was. I think we deserve a little more courtesy and compatibility, and we're not getting that, we are actually losing that. In this zoning bill, it will make it worse.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
And I live at 2042 Fountain Street, which is in the 1st District. First, I'd like to speak to the urban renewal plan that we had, and the heights for the zoning, proposed zonings are, and the density is nothing like the urban renewal plan. I can give you each property's heights, and the property in front of me was for 40 feet. We're now looking at a C1 of 60 feet, or a C2 of 100 feet. That's nothing like the urban renewal plan, nothing like it. Fells Point used to have an urban renewal plan, and Laurie and Jim, what you told me at the time was, you'll be better off with CHAP, and zoning will protect you. I'm going to put that in quotes, because that's what was said, zoning will protect you. The zoning is not protecting us, it's not protecting our historic community. The community, at a recent meeting of all the community groups, wants the urban renewal plan back, and are going to try and find a way to get it back, because this is not good. Laurie said that the zoning should enhance the neighborhood character. I don't see anything in these C1 and C2 zonings that enhance Fells Point's character. The tallest building in Fells Point is 55 feet. C1 is 60 foot, C2 is 100 foot. How's that compatible? I don't get it. First, I'm going to talk, I mean, I just feel like Fells Point's being sliced and diced by Transform Baltimore, and is now being served up on a silver platter to developers. That's not right. For all of these people who have made Fells Point what it is, have taken our small homes and spent hundreds of thousand dollars rehabbing them to make the area a beautiful area that people want to come to, and now we're going to have 100-foot buildings. 2030 Alizana Street, the bill was introduced to change it to R10, that concept was overwhelmingly rejected by the residents. C1 is, was proposed, now I hear C2, 100 feet is proposed. That's just ridiculous. The property is contaminated, it's contaminated with PCBs. I live there, I live on the street that abuts this, doesn't make me happy. So, the property owner now gets to benefit for the fact that he contaminated his property, he didn't clean it up, but he gets 100, be able to, the ability to sell the property with 100-foot building on it. Now, that's, that's wrong, that's just wrong. He needs to clean that property up. And as far as- And as far as zoning protecting us, when we lost the urban renewal plan for marketplace development, the one that Deborah Temparo was talking about, they tore down 18, count them, 18 historic properties to do this, and Planning and CHAP approved. That's not protecting the historic district. And two of those properties were pre-1800 buildings. Other properties that are very concerning, the Burger King and the Royal Farms lots, one fronts on Eastern, the other fronts on Fleet Street, these should be R8. That was what they were in the urban renewal plan, was R8 with the contingency to put them, to make them commercial properties. To make them C1 is, of course, it's going to happen. If they become C1, those buildings will be torn down and they will be developed. It will happen. 2029 Alessana Street is owned by Alexandria Real Estate or Skip Brown, and that property still owes the city money on a contract. And it's a large amount of money. The property was sold to Alexandria Real Estate under contract with the city, and the city was supposed to get a portion of the proceeds when that sale happened. That never, that exchange never happened. So, I'm not sure he should be rewarded with a C2 zoning and 100 feet on the waterfront, which will block everybody's ability to see the waterfront. And this one also needs to be, all right, this was, under the urban plan, it was zoned for 45 feet. Or it was... Transform Baltimore has not been transparent. The meetings have not been made public. Believe me, I called for two months trying to find out when the meetings were, and oh, the meeting was canceled, oh, the meeting's been transferred to someplace else, nobody knew where the meeting was. That was not helpful. And there were things that I needed to talk about at those meetings that I couldn't find out where the meeting was, and nobody seemed to know. There's still no traffic plan in southeast. So, our traffic gridlock tends to be really bad. It shouldn't take me 45 minutes to travel eight tenths of a mile. That's just crazy, and it's just, it's every day. So, all of this massive development with these C1s and C2s are not, you know, it's the cart before the horse. You've got to put the infrastructure in first before you make the allowances for developers to be able to develop these properties. That's all.
Yeah, I think if you go to the tables, it's 12903-2, which has the Fells Point waterfront overlay, and lays out the height limitations for the eight zones, and then look at the corridor, access corridors. I think that you'll see those numbers are, I think, the same as they were for those portions under, not the old urban renewal ordinance, but the reenacted urban renewal ordinance.
Right.
And we're not talking about the urban renewal ordinance from pre-2007.
The waterfront urban renewal plan.
We're talking about the waterfront urban renewal.
Which, quite frankly, the community had no input into that. That was a done deal. It was given to the community. Here it is, live with it.
Denise, you know, we had, I don't know, 30 meetings of the southeast, Historic Southeast Task Force on all of the zoning back in 2007. So, it's just clearly untrue that the community didn't have any input on any of that. So, anyway, thank you.
Yeah. And my other question is, over on the maps over there, it looks like there's an overlay of the zoning onto the riparian areas. Is that true?
Sorry.
For heights, for riparian areas.
Laurie.
Actually, our mapping expert over there is Jamie Williams. But basically, it's a mapping that the zoning goes to fill the full property line, and in many cases, the property line records go over the water. But, and I don't want to, I don't want to put the law department on the spot because I know it wasn't Jenny that worked on it. There is legal precedent in terms of how riparian rights are reviewed under zoning for land development.
Okay. Ms. Whitman, after the hearing, someone will be over there to answer your question.
Okay, several of these properties, several of these properties still have peer rights, which means potentially they could build one a peer.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony. Ms. Joan Floyd.
My name is Joan Floyd, and I am here tonight as the president of the Remington Neighborhood Alliance. We've been the civic association in Remington for 15 years. As of this summer, our boundaries are West 20th Street on the south, Mace Street on the east, Wyman Park Drive on the north, and the Jones Falls on the west. I'm just going to go over a couple of the amendments that I believe we have in already, and we'll end up following up later with the additional ones. Starting with educationally based amendments, we did, we did submit one quite a while ago regarding the 501 West 30th Street, which is actually the official address of Wyman Park. And we have asked for, as an organization, we have asked for the lease area of the former Wyman Park Center, which used to be a great neighborhood asset. The lease area, it's now a private school, which has a good relationship with us. And we do have our meetings there, but we want that area of the park to be, to not be OS and to be in a residential category for the very simple reason that the OS as proposed prohibits schools. So, we don't really want that school, which we understand is not going anywhere for any length of time, to actually be a prohibited use on where it is right now. So, we've asked for that lease area to be amended out of the OS and back into a suitable residential category. If it stays in the OS, it basically has a better chance of one day becoming a restaurant than being able to remain a school. Not a good thing. Okay, so, from that, to reiterate, our EC amendment, we, on the map, we have asked for 242 West 29th Street to be EC, I think it's EC1, it's on the record already. But I just want, that's because we want, that is the site of our planned future neighborhood school. And against all odds, we intend to make sure we get one. But there is a sliver of land that I, we did at the same time formally ask, is a little sliver of land that goes right with that, and technically, we want to make sure that also is part of that amendment. And it, and I was a little unsure tonight when I saw Councilwoman Clark's email, that it looked like that had dropped off, and it's just a tiny little piece of an old, I think an old alley. So, that goes with that, and I can follow up if the committee needs that information. Now, I did want to talk about the C1, and I think it's good that other people are talking about it, too. I was kind of surprised tonight because when I came in, I heard Ms. Feinberg describing different categories, and when she, she got to something that sounded like my neighborhood, and then she got to the C1. And I thought, well, you know, it's really hard to understand how we ended up on the proposed map with C1 on so many corner properties and other properties in our rowhouse blocks, and now there are other people, you know, requesting even more of it. And it is difficult when you haven't set it in stone yet as to what the C1, what you've decided the C1 is going to be. But I do want to say, I want to emphasize it, people have, if you're asking people to come and talk to you about this, we have to respond to what we see as the proposal. So, right now, what we see with the C1 is, that is proposed by both Planning and other groups, we see that it allows liquor stores, it allows taverns, it allows live entertainment, it allows bail bonds, it allows carryouts, it allows 60-foot buildings. And it's a pretty reasonable position for people to have, that they wouldn't necessarily want that on their block, in the middle of their rowhouse block or on the end of their rowhouse block. And, you know, other people spoke here tonight and talked very eloquently about protecting residents, protecting neighborhoods, protecting homeowners and their value of their homes. So, that's, and protecting, you know, just having a decent life, place you can come home to at the end of the day. So, it's a very reasonable position to have, and our organization has taken the position that the C1 is not appropriate for our rowhouse blocks. And we do look to the city council to come up with something that is more appropriate. And we will help you do that, by all means. But people tend to want to get upset when we say, this is what Planning's asking for. Well, it is what Planning's asking for. It's right there on paper, it's right there on the map. This is what other groups are asking for. Yes, it is. If they say they want C1, then they want the liquor stores, and they want the taverns, they want the entertainment, they want the nightlife. That's, you know, until, that's not what's proposed, that is what's proposed. So, people are starting to write letters. I have another one with me tonight I will submit to you. And I do have a question, which is, when will we have a chance to come back and testify about the map after the categories really are approved? Because that's when the rubber really hits the road, when people actually see, you know, what you do intend for this residential category or that commercial category. And that's when we really will know, when we'll be able to make a really, an even better informed comment to you, testimony for you at that time.
That is, Joan, that is a very good question. We're having the voting sessions regards to the texts and the tables. Now, we're doing the map amendments, and we will have two public hearings after that's finished, so you can come back and have input on, on the map amendments and the votes. So, that will be there.
Okay, I encourage you to announce it as far in advance as you can. You know, drop, drop flyers from airplanes if you have to. I know, we don't want to litter, but make them, make them, you know, make them out of toilet paper, I don't know. But anyway, just, just make sure everybody in the entire city knows about it, please. I'm really big on public notice, as you well know. And I also think that, you know, the form, there is a form, but it says information only. Frankly, I think we'd really good idea if there was one form and everybody had to use it. I'm just saying that as somebody, not as my civic association president right now, I'm a step, put another hat on, as somebody who has hacked the task personally of having to go through another jurisdiction's rezoning and look at every single amendment that was made and every supporting document, and they were, and they used a form. And it's amazing how, you know, manageable it is when they're actually using a form. It can just be a cover for the, for the letter, but then you can understand what they're asking for.
They, I have to give kudos to the staff. I mean, they are working very hard on this. So, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wants to testify?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Cynthia Gross, and I'm from the Care Community Association, which is in District 13. I've submitted some amendments.
There we have it.
And I'm sure you have them. The only thing I want to ask is, I think I attended or attempted to attend the Transform Forum at Morgan, and it wasn't a lot of people who signed in. So, when I got there, everyone was leaving. So, my only comment is that, for those of us who work and have to come long distances, that even though people may not sign up to speak, it would be helpful if people stayed so those of us who are trying to get to the session can actually speak. So, this is my second attempt coming to try to say something to you all, and I don't want to chase around the city. I want to be able to come and speak. If it says six to eight, I expect people to be there to six to eight. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any of the council people have amendments? Councilwoman Henry, you want to?
Yeah, I have a couple. I wanted to read. Thank you. I'm trying to dig out the right email to make sure I have this, but at 4201 York Road, there is a project underway to create Restoration Gardens 2. It's a sequel, as it were, to a very successful project for providing housing for young adults who are moving through transitional states. And there's one over in Park Heights that's been very successful, and they're trying to do another one on the east side of town. And so, I would like to propose that, that, 4201?
4201, but there's some associated.
There's associated properties. So, at this point, I would just like to say, associated properties in the 4200 block of York Road, I'm going to propose rezoning them from R6 to OR1. The second one is, there is a request, and at this point, since the request is not from the property owner, I'm just going to put it on the record. I'm still trying to reach out to the property owner to discuss it. But the, the lot at 5835 York Road, popularly known as the Staples Lot, it's where the Staples is on York Road historically, and originally, that was the parking lot for the Senator Theater. And when the Staples was built, a limited amount of parking immediately next to the building was reserved for Staples, and the rest was reserved for the Senator Theater. Since then, there's been a change in the ownership at the theater and confusion over the legal standing of the theater's ability to park there. And at current, the, the property owner is not using most of the parking on that lot in terms of making it available for customers and is merely renting it out, which was not the original use or expectation by the community of the use of that lot. So, the request I have is to split that lot such that the part closest to the Staples that needs to be remain, that needs to be used for parking for the Staples would remain C2, but the rear of the lot that is not being used for the benefit of public parking would be rezoned to R3 in keeping with the surrounding residential neighborhood. So, that's the second one. Then, the third one, and this is actually a question I have for Planning, so I'll continue to vamp for a moment until...
Laurie.
Yeah, I know, I know. So, at 5824 Hillen Road, there used to be a shopping center, which has since been purchased by BG&E and is going to be a substation. I noticed on the map that their existing substation across the street is still being proposed to have an underlying zoning of R5, as with the rest of the neighborhood. And so, my question is, since there is no intention for this substation to, again, in the future, be a commercial property, is there any reason why we shouldn't downgrade it back to the underlying R5 zoning?
Probably not. I'm sure BG&E would disagree, though. But the substations as a needed utility are conditional uses in most zones. As drafted, I believe we made them permitted uses in the industrial zones, and I believe conditional in the, I know conditional and residential, some of the heavy commercial probably permitted and some of the lighter. But not to confuse the committee, but the council also has amendments that have been put on the table in regards to how to treat substations in general. So, that may be, the short answer is it's probably fine residentially zoned, but it may be something you want to just circle back to.
Okay, I'm happy to discuss it further. And also, it was just my recollection of where we were so far in dealing with substations was that there was not a significant difference in process between a low C and a residential in terms of what they would have to go through to do things.
Correct.
And so, it seemed to make more sense and to be more consistent to... And so it seemed to make more sense and to be more consistent to...
To be residential.
To make it residential. But, so I'd like to put that amendment out there with the, with the, with the, clearly on the record that I'm happy to talk to BG&E and Planning further about it. And I think, I think those were the only three that I had. So, okay, thank you.
And you will submit that to the, to the committee? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Lori.
I have one question.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, we can.
You guys come over here.
Come up here. This is being televised, so please use the microphone.
I just, I wonder, my name's Cord Simpler. I've lived in, in the neighborhood for 40 years.
Which neighborhood?
Federal Hill. I just, I've walked around.
Okay. Can you repeat your name, please?
Cord Simpler, S-I-M-P-L-E-R. And I guess in hearing the whole zoning issue, I, I wonder what your three points have to do with Transform Baltimore? I mean, it seems like you're bringing up specific addresses, specific requests...
That's, that's what this meeting is for.
For just those three. I mean, I know you've covered that.
You want to use them?
I mean, are those neighborhoods represented here?
Okay, so just a bit of, bit of grounding.
I came in late, so...
Yeah, I know, and that's, what we had agreed upon was that while we are doing these map discussions in different parts of the city, that we would be able to talk about issues in any part of the city at any meeting. I, you, you may have missed, there was a woman who spoke earlier who was here representing the North, oh, North Roland Park Association, who had, and there were issues from the 13th District. So I'm, I'm taking this opportunity because I couldn't come to the Morgan one the other day to talk about three particular issues in my district where people had asked me to raise the issues.
Okay. Well, thank you. My only point in closing is that I, I was part of the group that fought the road when the city had the brilliant idea of building Expressway through Fells Point, and I remember very distinctly the options to get to Federal Hill and whether or not they were going to build a ramp to the top of Federal Hill with a buttress arrangement that was like fingers that went like this. I remember all those planning sessions. Option one, to build a ramp to the top of Federal Hill. Option two was to tunnel under Federal Hill, and the exhaust ventilators for the tunnel that was to go under the harbor were to be the same diameter as tree trunks, so that when you're looking out over the city and trying to admire whatever is left of it, that you would not recognize the thousands of cubic feet of auto exhaust that are belching out next to you. My summation, and again, I've come in late, and what I've read on the internet that you posted at this point in time, I'm very skeptical of the city being able to manage anything, to be perfectly honest with you. I seriously doubt, I mean, I've watched in my own neighborhood, people who have applied for historic credits, I heard a contractor one day, and I, I really thought about calling CHAP at the time, say to his worker, listen, as soon as the approval is made for us to get the debt of the tax break, we're going to take it out anyway. And I thought, well, there is a spirit and intent that you want to work with. The inspectors don't follow through. I mean, we went through the O'Malley administration when people built decks on every house in South Baltimore that would, you know, that they wanted a deck on, and I can share with you that, living in a house built in 1859 for 40 years, they're not intended to support that kind of weight, much less 10 people, or the average of 150 pounds walking around on it. The zoning enforcement, in my humble estimation, is ridiculous. I, I just don't see it. I don't see the enforcement. I mean, I've watched the zoning hearings on Channel 25. I guess I'll be on Channel 25 now, but...
Sure.
Yeah, but, yeah. But, but my, my bottom line on this, and I could go on for hours about my disappointment in Baltimore City and the way we operate.
Which I would recommend you do with your Councilman, Eric Costello, after the meeting.
He knows that. I mean, I think we're operating like a third world country, and it's my bottom line on the whole issue. But I, I really have serious doubts about, what is the intention of all this? I mean, as a retired banker, I can tell you that for anybody who would think about opening a business in Baltimore City, they really have to think long and hard. Maryland is not a pro-business state, and it's, it's going to be a challenge to get anybody to come here.
Here, here's what I would say before I give the mic back to the actual chair of the meeting.
Okay.
Because for whatever, for whatever reasons you've chosen to hit me with this, and I'm going to, I, I, what I'm going to say is, first of all, thank, thank you very much for caring this much to come out here and, and share this with us. Second, I think you, you're doing all of us a disservice if you don't make those safe comments at every possible forum of the mayoral candidates when that campaign begins.
I'll be there.
And, and third, I think there's probably a very comprehensive blurb about what Transform itself is attempting to do, because some of what I think you'd like it to do, we weren't even trying to do with Transform. And Lori, yeah, Lori, Lori can talk to you afterwards about, you know, what, where this intersects with the art of the possible and, and the other things, that's what I'm going to give you back to Eric for.
Sure.
I just, I'm compelled to add a statement to that, remember, this hasn't been done in, what, over 40, 40 years? And of course, Baltimore has changed and is continually changing, and, you know, these are zoning codes and laws that have been in place, and you need them in the city because it's, you know, we have residents that, that pay different levels of taxes, we have businesses, we have banks, we have faith-based institutions, I mean, and we have different levels, different economic levels. So we need rules and regulations, and we need to protect communities. So, you know, this is, we, we have been trying to make this as open as possible. We have meetings right within City Hall, but, you know, bringing the, bringing these meetings out is just us trying to reach out to all the community. So we're, when we have these meetings, as Councilman Henry says, we're just kind of sharing different neighborhoods throughout our entire city. So again, I'm glad you took the time to come, and that's what this is all about, trying to hash out, and it, it's hard pleasing everyone, but we want to try to please most people.
No, I, I understand that. I understand. Does anybody else want to take a shot at me, or I'll sit down, or?
No, 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 I mean, you're, you're correct. It's not an easy process. It's very complicated. And we, we appreciate you coming after testify and give us your views and opinions.
I could go on for hours.
I know, well, after we close up, you know.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next map hearing will be October 21st at 6:00 PM at the Southeast Anchor Library located at 3601 Eastern Avenue. I want to thank everyone for attending this evening's Land Use and Transportation Committee. And when I asked, what I'm asking you is, please check around at your seats and make sure whatever you brought with you, you take back with. Good evening.